The time is 7:15. Call to order, the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. Approval of the final agenda, I'll take a motion.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Donahue and a second for Member Martinez to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
No.
Aye.
Aye. And Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
It's been different this time.
Ex parte communications, do any members wish to report any tonight?
No.
Hearing none. Public comment for items on this agenda, not on this agenda or the consent calendar for the Redevelopment Agency. Seeing none, consent calendar, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move the consent calendar with a brief note.
This is the Redevelopment Agency.
Oh, sorry. Wrong one. Moved.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Pats to approve the consent calendar, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. There are no action items. The time is 7:16. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:16. Call to order, the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. A motion for approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Member Pats and a second for Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Special orders of the day. New practice.
We thought rather than have those who are honored kind of stand there and be spoken to, we'd invite them to join us up here. So could I have Lieutenant Fred Dower join me up here? Where is he? Come over here. Chief Tahada, would you join us as well? Could you join me on that side? So we have Employee of the Quarter is on the agenda tonight, and we have a great Employee of the Quarter to recognize, and that would be Lieutenant Fred Dower of the Emeryville Police Department. So on behalf of the City Council and the staff of the City of Emeryville, I am proud to award Lieutenant Frederick Fred Dower the Employee of the Quarter Award. For the fourth quarter of 2017, Lieutenant Dower started his career with the City of Emeryville December 18, 1995, as a police officer. Lieutenant Fred Dower's area of responsibility within the Emeryville Police Department is patrol operations. Fred oversees the 26-plus sworn staff personnel assigned to the patrol division. His duties include training, managing and supervising five patrol sergeants, planning and directing crime reduction strategies in our city, ensuring that patrol officers and supervisors are providing quality service to the community in a professional and courteous manner, and building relationships with our community partners, residents, business owners, and visitors to this vibrant city. Tonight, he is being honored as a result of nominations submitted by six of his direct reports, honoring his constant and ongoing display of leadership, professionalism, and empathy for all of his subordinates. Lieutenant Dower serves as a department leader and a mentor to many of the staff. During his 22 years of service to the City of Emeryville, he has changed countless lives and helped increase the professionalism of the officers and professional staff he supervises and serves with. We here at the City of Emeryville are very thankful for Lieutenant Dower's many valuable years of service to our community. As part of his employee recognition, Lieutenant Dower is being presented an award plaque and a gift certificate to an Emeryville restaurant of his choice. He will have his picture prominently displayed here in City Hall throughout the quarter, and he will have his lunch with the city manager and the police chief. He will have his drinks with the mayor. And we are very fortunate to have members in our police department who have served for a very, very long time. The average tenure in our police department, I believe, is somewhere between 12 and 13 years at this point. And for those who aren't familiar, that is an incredible length of stay for any police officer in one department. And so this city is very blessed to have people in uniform who are committed to our community, and I cannot think of any person on the police department staff who is more deserving of this award as Employee of the Quarter than Lieutenant Dower. And so I would hope you all join me in thanking him for his 22 years of service to the city and being our fourth quarter of 2017's Employee of the Quarter.
Well, in all fairness, I can think of at least 26 other people that I believe deserve this award. I am privileged and honored to work with the men and women of the Emeryville Police Department. I have been since the first day I was hired, and for the last 22 years, I've tried to work to earn the trust that was given to me, and that's given to all of us. What you don't see on a daily basis is the work that our patrol officers and our dispatchers are doing to help our community. This last weekend, a domestic violence victim from another state showed up at the police department with a two-year-old girl. She showed up at the police department because she had one family member in the Bay Area, and they wouldn't open their door for her. She came to the police department because you were the last hope that she had. Officer Giddings and Officer Murch worked tirelessly to find shelter for this woman. And it was very difficult. It was the weekend, most shelters were full, all of our normal resources were full, and thanks to Acting Sergeant Krimsky, who came up with an excellent suggestion, we were finally able to find shelter for this woman for at least 60 days. And then two of our dispatchers, Dispatcher Moore and Dispatcher Pinion, reached into their own pocket to make sure that this woman and her child had food. At the same time that's going on, your officers are in the other end of the city arresting a group of guys that were trying to break into cars. And that happens, not every, I won't say that happens every day, but it happens a lot more than you'd think. I honestly, I appreciate the recognition. I can't tell you how much it means to me to see so many members of the police department here that have come on their own time. It means a lot to me. Means a lot, the recognition, but again, I think we've got a lot of good people at our department that are just as deserving. Thank you.
Did you want to take a picture or not? Oh, you were going to take a picture. Okay, somebody wanted one.
I'll put my out here.
You got it, or you're done?
I'll take my out here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I break it, I have to fix it.
Thank you.
Item five, announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
We currently have a vacancy on the Housing Committee. We've received several applications, and you will appoint that position on April 3.
Thank you. Councilmembers reporting on meetings attended, special announcements, I'll start with Member Donahue. Do you have any?
No.
No, Member Martinez?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
We'll get to that one. Nope.
Member Pats?
I did attend the housing meeting for Alameda County, and the current budget projections are very grim, so I just share that with everybody. I'm sure you're all shocked to hear that, but it's a big challenge. So I was very excited to announce some things there. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I have just one. I will be participating in a panel on homelessness that Supervisor Keith Carson is hosting at the San Leandro Library all day on Thursday. That will begin at 9:30 a.m. with a panel of people who are currently experiencing homelessness, people who've recently left homelessness, youth who are homeless. I will moderate a panel after that of mayors in Alameda County and the local responses to homelessness, and then there will be an expert panel after that on interventions and solutions to homelessness. The San Leandro Library is located at 300 Estudio Avenue in San Leandro, and everybody is invited to attend. City managers report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I actually forgot, one item on item six was that, this is just a reminder to the community, as we agreed we were going to do this year, that if you're looking to get updates on public safety and fire service issues, you can subscribe online to AC Alert. The city is now contracting with AC Alert to provide updates, and they can send updates to your phone or email as you wish. So acalert.com will provide that to you. Okay, item eight is ex parte communications. Do any members wish to report on items on this agenda? I'll start with Member Pats.
No.
No, Member Medina?
No.
Member Martinez?
No.
And Member Donahue?
No.
I do have to report one. I had a conversation with Elizabeth Jewell regarding item 11.2, which is related to the master fee schedule. Okay. Public comment for the consent items and items not on this agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time for an item not on this agenda or the consent calendar has three minutes, and you may approach the podium now. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any comments on the consent calendar before I take a motion?
Yes. I would like to note, in regards to item 10.10, the District Attorney Nancy O'Malley announced today a new policy for her Alameda County to review and either reduce or dismiss up to 6,000 convictions as eligible under Prop 64. If you have looked at the letter, we're going to say, and it's in support of this policy, so it's very timely if we support it.
Okay, are there any comments? I'm racing back to my notes. Are there any comments on the consent calendar, or is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Pats to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The consent calendar is approved. Members, we're going to move to item, public hearings, item 11. 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville confirming the Public Works Director's report in authorizing costs incurred by the City of Emeryville in the matter of the appeal from notice and order of intention to demolish property owned by Andre Carpio at 1264 Ocean Avenue, Emeryville, California, case number ABC 15-001, to be charged with special assessment in the amount of $50,145.75 against the property. And I have received two comment items on this, and City Attorney, do you have a presentation you're looking to make this evening?
I do have a short presentation if the City Council would like to hear it, but I will also note that Mr. Carpio had sent correspondence to me. We had forwarded that to the City Council as well, advising that he could not be in attendance at tonight's hearing, and he had requested that this hearing be put over to another date. He did not specify when that date would be, but if the City Council so chooses, it could, at this point, put this matter over for a date certain.
Okay, thank you for that. So members, before we receive a presentation, we do have an email received from Mr. Carpio dated February 15, in which he states he's out of state at this time. Members, do you wish to proceed and receive the presentation, or what's the pleasure of the council?
May I make a motion?
Yeah, the other thing I'll add is that there are two people who've presented speaker cards as well who are here, so we can do one or the other. I just got them.
If I may, perhaps it would be better to hear the speakers first before you deliberate.
Yep. I would like to hear from the public.
Okay, I was just looking to, okay, that's fair enough. So are we waiving presentation, or can we hear?
I would waive the presentation unless the council has any specific questions on the staff report.
Councilmembers, do you have questions on the staff report?
No, sure.
Okay, presentation is waived, so this is a public hearing, and we will open the public hearing. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on this item. The public hearing is open. First to speak will be Michael Smith.
Thank you, members of the council. What happened to Andre, quite frankly, is disgusting. Andre is an 83-year-old with dementia who survived the Holocaust and got his house demolished. I have never seen a public agency so incompetent and heartless. When Patrick, who's Andre's son, was made aware of the situation, he immediately retained counsel and tried to work with your appointed attorney, Lance Baer. Now, the interesting thing is, when we see these officers here today, these police officers that are wonderful people, Chief Tahada, there's just a certain irony. Lance Baer was the attorney for the San Francisco Police Review Commission, and he was fired because he wasn't punishing corrupt officers, and he wasn't getting rid of racist officers that use words like nigger and kite. So it's just sort of ironic that that's the person that you'd get when we're surrounded by highly qualified, excellent officers here, and that's apparently the types of officers he supports. But to cut to the chase, Andre is out of state. I think his house is already destroyed. There is no other exigency that would require now imposing a $50,000 sanction on an 83-year-old Holocaust survivor with dementia. And I think just as an act of fundamental fairness, the purpose of government is to serve your constituents. Andre is one of your constituents. Let the man be heard. Give him the dignity and the fairness that was denied him and his family the last time this came around. Had we known about this earlier, there are dozens of people that Andre has helped over the years that would have stood up, but because of his dementia, we weren't made aware of this until it was too late, and we got absolutely no cooperation from the council and from this disgraceful piece of shit attorney that you hired. You guys hired this. Mr. Guina hired somebody that was fired from the City of San Francisco for condoning anti-Semitic and racist comments. So could we just put this off 30 days and give Andre his just due? Let him be heard? Give him the dignity and respect of someone that's lived in this city 50 years? And then make a decision if you want to charge somebody that makes $700 a month in Social Security a $50,000 assessment? There's already nonprofit groups right now that are willing to rebuild this house with his son because they're ashamed at the conduct of this council. So I don't see any grand emergency that would cause this motion to go forward right now and get $50,000 on the man's house that can't wait 30 days to let him be heard.
Thank you for your comment. Patrick Carpio?
How you doing?
Hi.
Anyway, this is the first time I was here, and I probably should have came many, many years ago. I lived with my dad for over 10 years at that house there. I understand it was a nuisance and all that, and I've dealt with it more than anybody. But anyway, like my friend said, you know, it all came at the last minute, you know? We tried frantically to try to, you know, try a resolution. I know that you guys couldn't get a resolution with him over the years as far as him cleaning up the yard, you know? He's being stubborn with that. He's got his mental illness, as far as I'm concerned, you know? He's got a hoarding issue. He's out of state right now. He's looking for my brother, who's been missing for about a year, so it's kind of an emergency, and he'll be back hopefully within a couple weeks. So I would please like a continuance. It would be a big help in the situation I'm in right now. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Patrick. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The time is 7:33, Madam Clerk. Council, we'll begin comments. Mr. Donahue?
Let's continue. I feel no compelling need to make an assessment right now.
Okay, Member Martinez?
I support that.
Member Pats?
I have a question for Mr. Guina. Are we having any timeline issues here?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any timeline issues?
No, there's no specific timeline. The only thing I would recommend is that if you were to continue, that you set a date certain tonight.
Okay.
But otherwise, there's no immediate, there's no time pressure.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
I support continuing it to a certain date. Should we, because of the nature of his excursion out of town, maybe postpone it to the meeting after next?
Hold on, everyone gets a chance to speak first. Do you have any other comments?
No, that's it.
No, so before we respond to that, Member Pats, I have a couple things I could say that'd be all right. So thank you both for coming this evening, Patrick and Michael. You know, I don't feel ashamed to say Andre is a friend of mine, and I know you know that, Patrick. And this is a hard thing for some of us up here, too. I just want to clarify, because I appreciate the sentiment you brought with you this evening, Michael, on a number of your points. You know, not excusing the past, but just being really clear that the City Council in a building demolition doesn't actually have any authority under the building code. It's the building inspector and the building code enforcement terms are there. We have been over this with our council repeatedly. We don't have much authority on the process that we've undertaken thus far, and so I'm not undermining any of your sentiments. I just want to be really clear for the public's benefit that this is a building code process. That being said, I'm, you know, just as we did with the administrative proceeding, I'm ensuring that Andre has all the procedural rights afforded to him and that he have an opportunity to present is very important to me as a defense attorney, and so I very strongly agree with all of my colleagues up here, and I didn't expect them to not agree. We will set a date certain as the attorney is asked to have him come back. And Patrick, I'd invite you to come back to the microphone so I can query briefly just whether March 6 is the next date and March 20 is the date after that. And before I cut off Member Pats' follow-up question, I just want to get a sense from you if he'll be back by March 6, so we could put it on the agenda then if you think that's possible.
March 6, that's two weeks.
It's two weeks from today. You think he'll be back?
I think he should be back by then.
Okay.
I'm assuming. I can call him. If you give me five minutes, I can call him and ask him.
Do you think he'll be back for sure by March 20?
I think definitely he'll be back by a month from now, for sure.
We don't need to bother him, given his current activities. I think that's okay. I can take your word for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick. Member Pats, do you have anything else to add?
You know, I felt like this is a hearing we scheduled it. I feel like we should have taken a vote on it. I was going to say that. I was going to get my question clarified first, but, you know, I appreciate you saying that this is the tail end of a very, very long process. This is not something that happened immediately, and I find it disingenuous to say somebody has a mental health concern, and then they're out of town searching for someone else. I struggle putting all those things together. I've, you know, met Mr. Carpio, so I'm not in a hurry to do this, but this is not against a person, and we're trying to make this about a person, and it's not about a person, it's about property. And so that is my comment, and that is, you know, but I hear there's a majority to support to postpone this.
You can be seated, Patrick. Thank you. I want to appreciate your interest in the good use of the city's time and resources. Member Pats, it's not lost on me, and I agree, this is not about a person, it's about, it's a building code issue, so it's about a building. That being said, I think, you know, my experience is similar to Patrick's, and I think it is a very small, a very small cost to us to afford a person of his age and his capacities a final opportunity to come and speak and present, and I think that that's a dignified thing to do. And I think that being absent can sometimes be a symptom of mental health issues as well. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion to continue this item to March 20, 2018.
Second.
20th or 6th?
20th.
Okay.
There's a motion by the mayor and a second by Member Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The members, I'm sorry, the hearing is continued. Item 11.2 is a public hearing related to the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the City of Emeryville's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2017-2018 effective February 21, 2018. Susan Shea?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The 1718 master fee schedule was approved by the City Council in June 2017. This amendment includes a new small cell antenna fee and a few adjustments for the Public Works Department. Does the City Council have any questions or comments regarding the fees?
Start with Member Martinez. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Member Donahue?
No, I don't.
Member Pats?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Done.
I have no questions either. Thank you for the presentation. This is a public hearing. Members from the public will have three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:39. The public hearing is open, and I have two speaker cards at this time. One is Matt Jurgovich. Matt, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here to speak about the light pole attachment agreement rate that's incorporated into this budget item. I work for a company called Vinculums. We do development services for the wireless industry that is seeking to attach to city-owned light poles. I've developed five small cell wireless facilities in the past in Emeryville, so I have a lot of experience in Emeryville with these facilities and throughout California. Based on my experience, Emeryville's proposed rate is much higher than most cities, and in practice, when cities impose such rates, these types of facilities just don't get built. And ultimately, the residents and the businesses that rely on wireless services suffer. Keep in mind, this rate is on top of the permitting fees collected by the city. It seems like a particularly arbitrary rate. I would argue that there's no nexus between the city's proposed light pole attachment rate and the maintenance of these poles. So therefore, I respectfully request reconsideration of the wireless attachment rate for these light poles, and I request for the city to negotiate the attachment rate separately with the industry instead of imposing it tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker is, my eyes are so bad, Damon?
Darren.
Darren Chan. That's okay, Darren. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Darren Chan. I'm AT&amp;T's External Affairs Manager for Alameda County. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight on item 11.2, the proposed amendments to the master fee schedule to include a small cell antenna attachment fee of $2,500. AT&amp;T appreciates the city's efforts to accommodate wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, but we ask that you continue the item to further allow discussions on the proposed fee. I want to just provide you a brief history of where we got to from AT&amp;T's perspective today. On November, in November 2017, we met with staff to provide an overview of our small cell build in Emeryville. During that meeting, we were informed by staff that AT&amp;T would be able to negotiate a master attachment agreement upon our first application submitted to the city for zoning. On January 30, AT&amp;T submitted its application, and since then, AT&amp;T has unsuccessfully attempted multiple times to engage the city to discuss the master attachment agreement. AT&amp;T then learned about the proposed small cell fee attachment by reviewing the published February 20 council agenda. To AT&amp;T's surprise and disappointment, staff did not inform AT&amp;T that the fee was going to be placed on the agenda despite our multiple communications, including the day and the week of the publishing of the agenda. We believe, as Mr. Jurgovich stated, that a small cell attachment fee prior to discussions or negotiations is premature and really not in the best interests of the city or carriers. Furthermore, if the council approves the proposed $2,500 fee, it may severely limit AT&amp;T's ability to deploy small cell here in Emeryville. To bring small cell technology to the City of Emeryville, carriers must be provided an opportunity to negotiate and to negotiate fair and reasonable terms to the agreement. So we respectfully ask the council to continue the item so that we can continue our discussion and dialogue with the city about our small cell deployment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darren. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item, please approach the podium now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:43. The public hearing is closed. Before we discuss this at council, I want to afford either Susan Shea, City Attorney Mr. Guina, or Charlie Bryant. Do you wish to respond to any of the comments that were made? You don't have to, but I'm just affording you that opportunity before we discuss. Charlie?[1766.51] Charlie?
Well, I can give you a little bit of background if you wish.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Let me say that the AT&amp;T currently has an application in for one small cell antenna on Powell Street near the honor bar. That is scheduled for a study session at the Planning Commission on March 22nd and for a decision on April, I think it's the 26th. We have done a survey of other cities and what their fees are for these facilities. As you may know, this technology is somewhat new, so a lot of cities are grappling with what they should do about it and how much they should charge for it. So we sent out a query on the League of California Cities Planners listserv, which goes to planners throughout California, and got back 23 responses, of whom 10 said they didn't have any fee and they just wanted a copy of the results, and the other 13 provided a lot of information. Some of them provided copies of their license agreements with various carriers, and most of them told us what their fees were. The fees range from $250 per year per pole, which was the rate that would have been set by SB 649. However, as you know, that measure was vetoed, and I think the one city that told us their fee was $250 told us that they were planning to increase the fee now that that bill had been vetoed. The others ranged from $1,200 per pole, I'm sorry, from, no, that's right, from $1,200 per pole per year, oh, $1,000 is the lowest, to $4,000 per pole per year. And the low 1,000 is Dublin, and they have a built-in 2% annual increase, and the highest one is San Francisco at $4,000 per year. And the rest range anywhere between those. For comparison, Santa Monica's fee is $2,500 per pole per year. That is slated to increase to $2,760 in 2022 and up to $3,048 in 2027. We also, Oakland did not respond to this query. However, we did contact the city of Oakland and found out from them that they are currently charging $2,300 per pole per year with a 3% escalation each year. I would also note that while some cities negotiate the fee on a case-by-case basis with each carrier as part of the master license agreement, most cities felt, and staff feels, that different carriers shouldn't have different fees. They should all be subject to the same fee. So rather than negotiating it with each carrier, we chose to put it in the master fee schedule so that all carriers would be charged the same fee, and then the fee itself would not be in the master license agreement with each carrier, it would just reference the master fee schedule. So that's the basis of our proposed fee of $2,500 per pole per year, which is within the range of what other cities charge.
Very comprehensive. Thank you, Charlie. City Attorney, do you have anything you want to add?
No. If the council wishes, it can adopt the fees tonight. If the council wishes, you can direct us, you can give us other direction as well.
Great. So we'll bring it back to council. I'd like to start with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually, the small cell tower fees came to my attention some time ago when I was made aware of the discrepancy between what our city charges and what our neighboring cities charge, and it was hit home to me when SB 649 came rocketing through committee and passed through both houses of our legislature. And if we, if that had passed and we had kept our fee very, very low, we would have been in a very poor position to fight back against that. I think what staff has proposed is very reasonable, and I will be supporting the, moving the master fee schedule.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
I completely agree with that sentiment, and these are our facilities, and, you know, we're having to create income for our cities and our many needs, and we should charge a moderate rate like we're proposing.
Thank you. Member, Vice Mayor Medina?
I concur with my fellow councilmembers, and also would like to really appreciate the thoroughness of that report. I appreciate how you arrived at what is a reasonable amount. I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Member Patz?
The fees are in line, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. My only comments are, I mean, I think, I think you've heard from four people the same thing at this point. You know, in reviewing the fee schedule that Charlie outlined, other cities are implementing these fees. I very strongly disagree with the notion that this should be negotiated individually with each provider for the reasons Charlie made. I think that's a very poor city practice, and I think that a master fee schedule eliminates the ability of private entities to leverage public agencies. And so I also support that. I don't believe we need to continue this matter, because I've heard very clearly from my colleagues that this is within the realm of reasonable, and to the argument that there's no nexus here. If, you know, if there was a nexus argument that was, that this was unreasonable, we haven't seen that anywhere, and I think the argument could be made that trying to issue state legislation that curtails the ability for locals to determine the cost of making repairs and maintaining poles suggests that that's not an argument being made in good faith. So those are my comments. I'll take a motion at this time.
I'd like to move.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve the fee schedule. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The resolution is approved. That's ended the public hearings. Action items. 12.1, the Commission on Aging's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for Year 2017 and the Proposed Priorities for 2018. And so Brad Helfenberger is our staff liaison here tonight, and this is a new function for all of us, Brad, so, you know, test pilot this for us. How would you, how would you like to present this to all of us?
Well, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Commission on Aging, Joyce Jacobson, who is going to present the annual report.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, Joyce.
I can't see.
Oh. And if they need, I took those off the podium. You can put them back if they need them.
Okay.
Where's the bar?
Right here. Okay. You ready?
Yes. I'm Joyce Jacobson. Good evening. I'm Chair of the Commission on-
Could you pull the mic, could you pull the mic towards you so we can hear you a little bit? Thank you.
I'm Joyce Jacobson. Okay? Is that hearing better?
Yes.
Okay, good. And this is Mary Farrell, who sits on the commission. The City of Emeryville Commission on Aging is dedicated to promoting a dignified, helpful quality of life for older adults by advocating for vital services, providing opportunities to develop fellowship, offering lifelong learning activities, being an accessible community resource. To further these goals, the commission reviews resources available to Emeryville seniors and identifies needs. Okay. I think you were going to do number one. Number one, transportation. No, you're going to do that. No, that's not what we came up with. That's all right. Okay, transportation. There are two benchmarks. We had a workshop on June 12th of last year with the leadership of Louis Labatt and Yvonne Behrens. We presented the workshop at the Senior Center on Transportation Choices involving AC Transit, BART, Paratransit, Eight to Go, and between 50 and 60 seniors attended. Many signed up for Clipper Cards and became aware of economical choices, including those with citizens with disabilities. Eight to Go. We received ongoing reports on the Eight to Go van service and the funding problems this essential service faces. On our next thing, we talked about the age-friendly cities that AARP is developing communities all over the United States and other countries. And we went to the city council, and you all agreed, and so we've started, and we're really, we're real excited about the opportunities that are coming. And the next thing was, whoops, I didn't bring it. Our Vice Chair of our commission, Winifred Arbider, developed this, put it together, and gave it to each member. And we are really excited about sharing this, and we hope that maybe another commission or committee might also like to use this very effective tool. What it is, is a notebook that has everything you'll ever need if you're on the commission. It has the history of the, the mission of the commission, rhymes, and the members and their expiration dates, our dates of our meetings.
Let's call them term dates. Expiration dates is a pretty scary word.
Time that it's time to go. Anyway, and then we have the Brown Act guidelines that we had in training, and it's right there at our fingertips if we ever have a question, is this right or not? Can, how many of us can get together? That kind of thing. We have our work plan, all of our minutes and agendas in order, and all the wonderful handouts our expert sharing people provide to us. So we are really pleased to be able to share this with you. Anyone has a question, you can look at my notebook. Our priorities for this coming year, 2018, include the first year of planning for the Age Friendly Communities Initiative. In addition, there will be a focus on housing and transportation issues which are ongoing in Emeryville. This will include support for funding for Eight to Go shuttle service beyond June 30th, 2019, that's currently funded through that period of time. Okay. Our first highlighted priority for the Age Friendly Communities, which is a five-year program, and when we complete that, Emeryville will be designated as an age-friendly community and will be part of, actually, it's not only a nationwide, but a worldwide network. We will conduct a comprehensive and inclusive survey of seniors in Emeryville and the age-friendliness of the city at this time. This project requires the active participation of seniors in all aspects of the process, and two of our commission members, Baruch Golden and Yvonne Behrens, will be actively working on this with staff. The second highlighted priority is transportation, the Eight to Go shuttle service, which provides vital transportation for seniors and for people with disabilities. And many of the people using that service do have difficulty using public transportation, and that van, though it's small, is capable of taking people in wheelchairs. We would like the city to start funding Eight to Go in its next budget cycle. As the population has increased in Emeryville, the senior population, of course, has grown as well, and I think the key there is that there are a lot more people living past 80, like me. And as people get into that older range and are still active, they need more services. And now, a second item is, we appreciate the fact that we have a city council member attending our meetings again. And we went through a period of time where there was no city council member presence, and the commission felt like we had a lot of trouble figuring out how to communicate with the city council, and basically felt we lost touch with the community, with the city council, and that you guys lost touch with us. So we're very, very happy to have Diane attending our meetings and to have that resource again. We want to thank the city council for the very long history of support for the senior center and for seniors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you both. So this is an action item, and it will be open to public comment, but I'm wondering if there's any questions for Joyce or Mary before, we'll take comments later, but are there questions about their report before we open it to public comment? No. Members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item and on the report provided by our friends from the Commission on Aging are welcome to do so now. Seeing none, I would like to kick it off with our council liaisons from each of these committees. So Member Martinez, can you kick us off?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that the, serving on the Commission on Aging has been a true honor, that the members are dedicated, they're organized, and they're very serious about the work that they do, and I really value their, all of their contributions. And I just want to note that their chair runs a really tight meeting, so if anyone needs a meeting run by a community member, I would recommend Joyce Jacobson.
Great. Member Donahue, you have anything you want to add?
Well, I can dig into the weeds on funding for Eight to Go, what the real costs are. I know that we would have to have that in our, I guess, the county was the original supplier of funds, is that right?
The question, Joyce?
Oh.
Can you use the microphone if you're going to answer him? Thank you.
Alameda County funded Eight to Go through grants for many years, but in some ways, what I consider ironically, when Measure BB went into effect and they had a lot more money to spend, there was also a lengthy period of time taken by staff and management of ACTC to see what directions they wanted to go. We get funded through some small portion of surplus funds that is dedicated to projects for seniors and disabled. They decided that they were no longer going to fund direct service projects. So a year ago, we got the last of our grant money, and because Brad has been very, very effective in managing that money, he had been able to set aside some money to carry us through. Part of the funding for Eight to Go still comes through Alameda County to the portion that is dedicated to cities, and we get, you know, roughly $60,000 a year that comes to Emeryville for senior projects, and it goes, is managed through this senior center and, or that division. And a good part of that money is going to fund Eight to Go, but can only fund part of it, and we would be asking the city to fund part.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No.
No? Member Patz?
You know, I served on this committee for, I think, one meeting, and it was wonderful. Asked to switch with me, so I'll just say keep up the good work and leave it there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Nothing, except that I feel like I'm missing out, and I need to go to one of these meetings.
You should.
Make sure we Brown Act question that check.
Two can go.
Two can go, yes.
One other person.
I just want to add on my appreciation. It's one of the most active resident committees. I know it's a commission, but it's one of the most active ones, and I see a number of members beyond those who reported here this evening, and I just want to thank you all for your community service. You know, one of the things that really got me connected to a lot of seniors in the community was getting to know Joyce Jacobson and Betsy Cooley, and I've gotten to know Mary and other people. Louis, I see you back there, a lot of, a lot of folks who work on the commission, and I share your goal and the, some of these goals, especially the housing one, ensuring that people can remain independent and stable in their home and, you know, and sustain in place. And I think that the initiatives you're pursuing are consistent with that vision you've had for a long time, and I really am grateful to you, and I think that the seniors in this community really do benefit from the service you give them. And I hope, I didn't do this earlier, and so I'm going to do it for the clerk now. I hope that you will consider staying to listen to the other good committee reports we have, but we will be discussing our housing bond, and one of the things that will come from that is an opportunity to provide more affordable housing for seniors and other people on fixed incomes to stay in place. And so thank you for your good work. Okay. So with that, we'll move to item 12.2, which is the Public Art Committee's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments from 2017 and their proposed priorities for 2018. Sharon Wilcher and Chad Smalley.
So all you'll have to do is hit this arrow to go forward.
Okay, all right.
So I'll hand it right over to Sharon, to Sharon Wilcher. Yes, it's this arrow right here. You can take that, it'll advance.
Okay. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Delighted to be here this evening, and I do chair the committee, and Jean Goldman, who is our vice chair, is here this evening as well. The Emeryville Art and Public Places Ordinance and its initial policy- The Emeryville Art in Public Places ordinance and its initial policies were first adopted in 1991. And those policies covered both public art in the public sector and also in the private sector. Now, in its 27th year, our nine-member-appointed committee of both residents and business representatives all have a demonstrated interest in the arts and a firm belief in the transformative powers of the arts in the community, in our community. So we're charged with advising the city on the projects and priorities for the Art in Public Places funds for the advancement of the Art in Public Places program. And we thought we would just share with you, maybe in chronological order. And I want to mention who our committee members are, really so appreciative. I've mentioned Jean already, Edith Bresnahan, Harley Jensen, Melody Cosma Kennedy is our newest member. She just joined us last month. Lauren Merker, Alicia Raffel, Adam Ruck, and Judith Wedder. And we also have, Scott Donahue is our liaison, and we're really just so grateful to have him there, both as a councilperson and as an artist. You bring an awful lot to the committee. And Amber Evans is our staff person, and we give her a lot to do. And also, of late, I have to say that Chad Smalley and Emmy Terrio have often been in attendance, because now there's an identified nexus, which most of us have known all along, between economic development and the arts in the community. So we started out, the beginning of this year, yes, we have to do that, okay, with public art that was, had been installed at the ECL. So even though the work was installed toward the end of 2017, we actually held a reception with the artists present at the beginning of the year. Excuse me, it was 2016 and the beginning of 2017. Kelly Ordings' Weaving in Waterways is a mural that's in the teen center, and you see that on the bottom of the PowerPoint. Paul Vexler's Trefoil Sculpture Suspended from the Ceiling in the Welcome Center is just a gorgeous piece. I was just at ECL yesterday, and it's, rather, this morning, and it was just a treat to see it there. And Madeline Wiener's Basking in Knowledge is, there are three granite sculptures in the library courtyard. And also, we had an additional piece that was generated through one of our workshops for the Public Art Master Plan. And that was done at Bullseye, a community meeting. And they created a piece that's also installed, and they donated it to ECL. So our Bus Shelter Program. The program actually started in 2009. We're now in phase four of that. And we, with over 100 pieces of artwork that have been reproduced and placed in the bus shelters. A couple of our ongoing programs are only open to artists who live or work in Emeryville. Most of our public art commissions are much broader than that. Public art is a very specific discipline. But both the Bus Shelter Program and the Annual Purchase Award are for artists who live or work in Emeryville. And some of these, I mean, this has been such a successful program, and the work has been so, I mean, it's just beautiful. We're just heading into the second half of the six that you see up there. And we're, it just happened, they're a lot more whimsical, and we're going into the spring and summer. And I think they'll be a wonderful addition to the project. But because these are such wonderful pieces, we do keep, we do keep all of the 100. They're in storage in various places. But we begin, begun to repurpose some of them, and there are some that are now installed over at the Senior Center. And so we look for opportunities to be able to continue to use those beyond their installation in the bus shelters. So sign of the times, here's another really successful project. It's one that actually won a national award for the Americans for the Arts. And this was intended to be a temporary project and actually was installed for 10 years. And a decision was made by our committee to recommend that we actually commission the artist Sayed Alavi to create 20 new images in the same style. And so those were installed this past year throughout the city. Along with that, there's a mention of the Art in Public Places map. And we've just reprinted that, and now we have the bike route also through public art that's there. All these things can also be found on the city's website. And I wanted to mention that we do have publications for many of these things. And they're all distributed, I think you have them in your packet, but the Public Art Map, the Bus Shelters, the Purchase Award, these things are distributed, certainly, they're here at City Hall, at ECL, but they're also in local cafes and restaurants and hotels, and they're also distributed at the school. We make sure that the students have access to these as well. So, now, the next would be, we did, through brainstorming and a lot of letter writing in support of our application to the California Arts Council to have our city designated as a cultural arts district, we feel we participated. And this is just very exciting, that there are only 14 cities that are in this initial pilot program. And so we love the brought in city to fertile ground, and a community of creative makers. This is all along what we call the Expanded Hollis Corridor, which takes in expressions on the north and comes all the way down to Pixar in the south. So we're looking forward to, this is a five-year pilot program, and we're looking forward to finding ways to have some branding out in the community with this. The Annual Purchase Award, this has been, was first initiated in 2006. And we now have over 18 works from 16 artists who live or work in Emeryville that are in public spaces. And this year, John Woods' Chinese New Year, Ralph Hillibrand's My Americans, the Photograph, and Kazuko Watanabe's beautiful piece at the Senior Center were all installed. And actually, this is the first year that we rotated a few pieces. It's not so easy. Some of them are very specific in terms of their electrical requirements, et cetera. But it's been nice, actually, to be able to do that just a little bit. It takes some extra work, but it means now that down in the lobby, you know, we have some new work that will be shared probably for several years before we move things again. And then, we closed out the year with the Shell Mound Gateway. And this was a commission to Rosario Marquardt and Roberta Behar in installing colorful tiles under the Powell Street overpass on Shell Mound, which also includes a lighting element. So those are accomplishments for the past year. And while some of these things are coming to fruition in a given year, we're also thinking ahead and working on RFQs or RFPs for works that'll be coming up in the future. So our 2018 goals, major goals, a mural program, or at least a pilot for a mural program. As most of you know, the Shell Mound, excuse me, the Greenway has just progressed across Powell Street, and hopefully soon will be truly open. And we have, tonight, on your, in your agenda, you will be reviewing the mural that's been recommended for the building that's in that new stretch of the Greenway. This is a pilot program in a couple of ways. And one of those has to do with a sort of a public-private partnership. This is on a, the mural will be installed on a private building. And, you know, with the end of redevelopment and what that meant for our public art fund, sort of looking at ways that maybe we can work through some of the issues that might come up with public and private. So public monies, but on a private building, and the cooperation of the owner, and maintenance of the piece, et cetera. So we actually received, in this case, we received 15 applications. And you'll be seeing the one that was selected this evening. The next is the Marina Public Art. And I have to say that both the murals and the Marina were things that came up during our discussion of the Public Art Master Plan. These were things that the community seemed to be interested in. For the Marina Public Art, we received 92 applications. We did a national search for this. And we had 11 semifinalists. And next month, you'll see the three finals, she'll be asked to approve, allowing them to move forward to create maquettes and more detailed information about their proposals. So that'll be coming to you in March.
I think you're one slide behind.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. And so we've already mentioned, so these are ongoing things, the Purchase Award, the Bus Shelter Temporary Art. Celebration of the Arts, while it's not a project of the Public Art Advisory Committee, currently, the Celebration of the Arts does receive financial support through the Public Art Fund, Cultural Arts District. And then, something new for us will be this private-public art review for the public market and also for Sherwin-Williams. And so we will be participating in discussions with proposals that are being, you know, for those two projects. It's not our decision, but we'll be, it's the first time we'll be involved in the private sector in that way. So we are truly excited that the arts are so much a part of our community. And I think we really enjoy all the work that we do on the committee. And we look forward to the Arts Center potentially housing some of the Arts in Public Places efforts. And we also, when I mentioned the public-private partnerships, in, looking at that in terms of seeking sustainable funding for the Public Art Fund so that we can continue creating new projects in the future. And so we're also, I mean, I have to say, you know, encouraged with the council's recent direction to staff to issue an RFQ and P for the Center for the Arts, and looking at what some of these new partnerships might be. So we thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Before we take member comments, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the report from the Public Art Committee? Seeing none, I would like to offer, Member Donahue, our council liaison, to the Art Committee, the opportunity to go first.
Well, the, one of the things that Sharon mentioned was now that economic development considers the arts as a part of our city's future economic reality. And I think that is accurate for our city. And it just pleases me to see how we can have a mixture of arts for a variety of our communities that live and work in our city, and also that our business community can be involved and a part of that, too. And I think that it bodes well for our future as a city.
Thank you, Member Martinez.
I just wanted to say that I'm extremely proud to live in a community with so many artists, and which has a history of supporting public art. And I want to thank the committee for their work. And while we're on the topic, I just wanted to ask Member Donahue, which one of these sculptures is you, and which one is your brother?
Neither one.
I've heard, I heard.
That's a lie. Okay. The answer is they're both Brian. Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, thank you.
I want to go to Member Pats.
First of all, they're a neighbor of the Donahues. I'm going to throw that out there. Checked on this on more than one occasion. They're a neighbor of the Donahues. And I'm more excited to talk later about the piece that's coming up, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
I'd like to thank you so much for all of your hard work on the committee. And I got to say, I think the lighting element with the tile really adds something fantastic to a part of town that was so dark before. And I really just love that piece so much.
And I'll just echo my colleagues' comments. And I'm very excited about the RFQ to move the Arts Center along. I think that will be a tremendous achievement for this community when we get there. And I'm very pleased we're working on that. And I want to thank the city's staff for all their work on it and helping us get that out the door. And I want to thank Member Donahue for representing artists so well. And it's great to be in a small city that promotes public art, but it's really awesome to have an artist on the city council. And I think your creative approach to many of the things we do has really helped illuminate and educate my thoughts on things a lot. So I really appreciate you as well.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you for your service. And we will move on to 12.3. The next committee is the Budget Advisory Committee. I have no biases here. Susan Shea and Mr. Reuter, good to see you, sir.
Turn music. And how do I address that?
Now, Mr. Reuter, I only have one request of you. We all know the Budget Advisory Committee meetings last over two hours, but the slideshow may not.
It won't.
Okay. Go ahead, friend.
Mayor Bowders, Vice Mayor Medina, city councilors, and fellow citizens. Let me start by saying that it's a real pleasure to work with the BAC team, the Budget Advisory Committee team. Susan Shea and the other staffers from the finance side of the House support us very, very well. The members of the committee are close readers of sometimes massive and complex documents, much appreciated there, keen questioners, and sound advisors regarding the finances of the city and maintaining a stable economic situation. The 2017 accomplishments, some of these are regular and routine things that the Advisory Committee does. And I don't think I want to go through them point by point. You've got them before you, and I think you understand them reasonably well. In fact, much of what I'm going to say is very familiar with all of you folks up there on the podiums. I'd like to stress instead the things we worked on, which will carry over and continue to be part of the focus of our activity in the coming year. For example, Section 155 pension trusts connected with how we deal with and finance down the road are increasingly challenging problem of unfunded liabilities, pension liabilities. And I'll comment on that a bit more later on. Master fee schedule, we looked at it last year, we're going to look at it again and continue to look at it. And as you've seen tonight, it's a delicate balance. How do we get what we want for the city? What kinds of fees do we charge? And how do we stimulate the activity that we want to see coming into town? And that balance has to be carefully assessed. The Budget Advisory Committee likes to look at those things and comment on them and make suggestions. Regarding some of the other challenges and opportunities, I'll defer that to talking about matters for 2018. I would like to note that we did discuss, or began to discuss, budgeting in ways that can support economic development strategies for the city. I also serve on the Economic Development Advisory Committee, trying to provide a link between budget matters and their needs. And that's an area that we want to pay close attention to in the year ahead. A quick comment on the state of the city right now, but don't get your hopes up that this state will continue on into even the near future. The debt is under control. I remember when I first started serving on what was then called the Finance Advisory Committee, our population of the city was under 10,000. And the debt for the city, combined, interest and principal, both economic development, I'm sorry, the redevelopment agency fund and the city's debt, was about $250 million. I'm happy to report that that debt is now down to about $125,000 and a couple hundred thousand. And that's because of strategically well-done refinancing of the debts during the Great Recession. And the budget, what we're paying for interest now is much less than what we were paying before. So that's a nice piece of business. And our credit rating is excellent. Our reserves happen to be robust, as high as I've seen them while serving on this committee, at about 50% of a budget cycle. But don't, as I say, take that as a sign that all is well. We have two big problems. We have two big problems down the road that we have to address. One of them is unfunded liabilities, and that's basically our pension funds. PERS, the Public Employees Retirement System, cut back their estimated earnings from 7.5% to 7%. That instantly increased the cost of our unfunded pension liabilities by many millions of dollars. And we have to deal with that. I know you folks are aware of it. I know you're thinking about tactics and strategies to do so. I assure you that the Budget Advisory Committee is also focused on that challenge. The other big challenge is the flattening, or possibly down the road, we're not really quite sure what's going to happen, to our revenue flow for the city. And the principal cause of that, or the difficulty there, is online buying as opposed to buying in brick and mortar shops and stores. We make, the single business biggest source of income for the city comes from retail taxes. Those taxes are paid by brick and mortar places. They are not paid by folks who are providing online buying services. We have to keep an eye on that. We have to look for new revenue sources down the road. Very important thing to focus on. The Budget Advisory Committee is focused on that as well. I know you have a team working on it, Mayor Bowders, Councilperson Martinez, and good luck. We all need good luck in this area, our department. So in the future, we'll be looking closely at exactly those kinds of problems and difficulties. We'll be looking at economic development strategies. We want to coordinate closely with the Economic Development Advisory Committee as best we can. We're going to take, we'll invite to one of our first meetings, our early meetings, as soon as we can get our hands on him, Chad Smalley, our one-man chamber of commerce in town, and ask him to talk about what he thinks might be the financial needs to stimulate economic development in the city. And we'll pay very close attention to what he has to say. And I'm sure he'll pay very close attention to what we have to say about our budget challenges down the road. And that's just about it, except for one other thing which I'm intrigued by. You'll notice on our list of things that we're going to be doing, Budget at a Glance document to provide clear and transparent information to the public. I consider that a very important step, especially as we're facing challenges down the road. We're going to be going to the community, asking them to look at fees, asking them to look at possible tax increases or bond measures. And the more the public knows, the folks who live here in Emeryville and vote here in Emeryville, know about our financial challenges, the better we will do in negotiating the shoals ahead. All of our economic advisors say the next five to 10 years, we face real revenue and expense challenges. There isn't a whole lot of fat to cut from, in fact, very little. And I can see we're running lean on staff. And we want to in the future, of course, continue to provide the services that the city needs. So we're all in this together. We have challenges ahead, and I hope we all survive. Thanks very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Members, do you have questions?
No.
No, thank you, Bill. Members of the public who wish to speak on this report are entitled to three minutes. Are any members interested in speaking? Seeing none, if my colleagues will humor me, I'll break Robert's rules of order and ask to go first as the liaison. Is that okay with everyone?
Please do.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have the privilege of being the council liaison to the Budget Advisory Committee, small and mighty as they are. Benay Curtis, Bauer, Bill Reuter, Fran Quatell, Nate Centeno, and Miru Desai are a powerhouse team. They do analyze a lot of numbers and a lot of policy tied to numbers, which is not a space most people like to go in their heads. And when we were examining and doing polling for some of these potential initiatives, you may recall in that polling, we asked people whether they thought we were in the right or wrong direction on a lot of items. And one of them was the budget. And over a third of the public said, "Don't know, no opinion." It's very, it was by far and away the biggest item that most people had no opinion on. It's because it's a very hard thing to grasp. And that's not speaking poorly of the public, it's just that it's a very, very dense subject matter. There's a lot of complex items, as Bill alluded to. And I really want to thank the five of you who serve on that committee. The city is really fortunate to have people with your professional acumen and your financial skills who are so dedicated to doing the work that you do to provide us very good recommendations. And as the Budget Advisory Committee liaison, since I've been on this council, I am really grateful to you for that. I just want to add on to a couple of quick things Bill said. You know, the Pension 115 trust, we throw that number around, and I don't think people know what it is. And I just want to take a moment to let the public know that, you know, that's actually one of the couple of things that the council has done with the sage advice and guidance from the Budget Advisory Committee to deal with the state problem from PERS that Mr. Reuter already spoke about. Cities all across the state are being handed a much bigger receipt for things to pay in the future. And we're trying to adjust now before we face huge obligations that we wouldn't be able to pay for. And one of the things that this council did unanimously, and I'm grateful to all of them for their foresight on, is we made a $4 million advance investment in public safety pensions last year. And that saved us roughly $10 to $11 million of money in the long run. And so I really want residents to understand that there are some rough waters, as I think bill's the term you used ahead. But the council has been very proactive in minimizing that. I know that in the future, many people won't see or understand the choices we made today and how they impacted that. But working up close with you, I understand that. And the Pension 115 trust is the back half of that. We put over $9 million into a trust that we locally control, that's dedicated to pension obligations for our city's staff in the future. But unlike the sometimes poor management from the state in the PERS system and the fickle nature of the legislature, the city can control the investment scheme. It can be more locally sourced, and it allows us a lot more discretion as to what is the right investment for our future. And so it really gives us an opportunity to make the most bang for our buck. Lastly, I just want to comment on the Budget at a Glance. My hope is that that is a document that the public can use to become more familiar with our budget, the challenges we're facing from the state and from some of these existential threats from the online realm. But I think, you know, you were really well made point, and we're going to hear from economic development next, that the partnership between budget and economic development is a critical one. Because as we move forward, we really need to look at where the market and the revenue opportunities are if we're going to protect our budget's future. So with all that, I just want to thank all of you again. And I will turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Martinez.
So thank you, Bill, for your presentation. And I want to reiterate, we are in a good position, partly in due to decisions we have made as a council, very much partly in due to the wisdom of councils before us. But we can't underestimate the advice of our Budget Advisory Committee, who has transitioned through many members of council and been advising us for quite some time to hold our pocketbook close. I want to thank our council liaison, Mayor Bowders, because I don't know any other elected officials with the acumen and the appetite that you have for digging into a budget. Maybe the mayor of Union City, who happens to be an enrolled agent, but that's her day job. But you're definitely a close second if she's first. And I also wanted to touch again on the challenges that we have, the unfunded liabilities and the flattening of the retail sales revenue, and let the public know that we, as a council, are very concerned with our economy and that we're definitely looking for ways to bolster our revenue. And we're going to explore every avenue. And I also, I just wanted to give a shout out to the idea of a Budget at a Glance document because I think we do need accountability, and we do need a report card. We do need a good, easy way to communicate with the public how we are doing. So thank you for all of the work that you do.
Thank you for those comments, Member Martinez. Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you so much for your service on this committee and your council. It's been greatly appreciated and very helpful.
Thank you, Member Pats.
You know, I just want to quickly thank you guys. Digging into numbers is probably one of the harder things to do on a committee, and I appreciate the sage advice you guys give. And I appreciate Member Bauer for his time on the budget, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Pats. Member Donahue.
All things in life require balance, and reassessing what we need today is not necessarily what we need tomorrow and what we can, the choices are complex, and we absolutely need you. So please stay with us and help us. Continue.
They don't have an expiration like the Commission on Aging. With that, we will move on from Item 12.3. Thank you, Budget Advisory Committee and staff. And thank you, Susan Shea and Peggy, for your work as well. Item 12.4, our last committee for this evening, is the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And Chad Smalley, Charlie Bryant, and Ms. LaRoche, hello.
Introduce our chair, Alexandria LaRoche.
Or just Alex is fine. Kind of a mouthful. So my name's Alexandria LaRoche. I am the chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So much like that name, EDAC is what we'll refer to it myself. Alex is perfectly fine. Nope, there's not a lip here. So welcome, everyone, and thank you. This committee is compiled of a nice mix of members of the committee, members of businesses. Much like mentioned earlier, we do not have a chamber here. So thank you to Chad for being the one-man band and being a little bit of a chamber. So we will first talk about the role. So as I mentioned, we have a nice mix of people in our committee. And a lot of our responsibilities kind of fall, I'm going to go through that, kind of fall between the roles of, say, a chamber and the roles of 12 dedicated people who are passionate about what's happening in the city. So our main job is, of course, policies and priorities as it relates to economic development. And then we serve as the principal advisory committee for things that are happening with Emeryville businesses. That includes 1,000 businesses, pulling 21,000 people here in Emeryville. So it's, of course, an important part. 2017, which seems like forever ago, we put together several items. I'm just going to click through here, so they're all kind of showing here, beautiful. So we requested, and of course, it was granted, so thank you, a change to our meeting schedule, making sure that we're serving our efforts appropriately. And of course, the efforts to impact the city moved from a quarterly to a bi-monthly basis. And our meetings are robust at times as we are leading the charge on some pretty serious topics, again, impacting what's happening here in Emeryville. Our meeting schedules allowed us to, again, have meaningful input for items such as the business license tax and the fire inspection fee rebate program, as well as the facade improvement program. The rebate program was approved by the council in February, and since then, $7,000 in rebates have been provided to small and independent businesses here in the community. The facade program was approved by the council in May, and we've received 10 applications for over $600,000 in funds, demonstrating the pretty severe need for this program. So again, thank you. $200,000 was budgeted for this program, and awards are expected to be recommended by the EDAC for council action in May later this year. And we're still on, we got a lot done, so we're still on accomplishments. We did host the inaugural day on the Bay, which was held in March. There's 200 attendees. And we do have another edition planned for March 24th, so we will see you guys there. The exciting part of this is that this year is expected to be much bigger than last year with the paired-up shortest triathlon event. And thank you to John Mayor Bowders for helping us with this.
No problem.
Appreciated.
You're welcome.
Another important activity is, of course, we were able to help advocate the Rotten City Cultural Arts District. So again, we're one of the 14 cultural districts across the state. Not only is this important from a city revenue side, bringing people here, but as a hotelier, I can tell you that hotel tax also feeds the bounds of folks in Emeryville. So it's a good thing. So thank you for that. Let's skip through some of this. So we did host the Small Business Joint Study Session. 80 businesses were represented. And really, the mission of the joint session was to provide input for us as committee members to really see what's taking place here in Emeryville. Out of that study session, we created the Development Strategy for Art and Innovation, so paired very closely with the Arts Committee, so thank you to them. And we now have a pretty tried and true work plan, so very excited about that. Since I've been on the board, I think this is the first time we've had a very clear and concise roadmap that kind of touches everything. So, and again, shout out to Chad for helping us compile that information together. So again, over a year was lots of work in compiling. And probably the best thing I think we did last year was we hosted a networking event for businesses, business leaders, those who sometimes come to Emeryville that weren't actually sure what we do here. And it was an exciting event. My hotel actually was the host of the event, and I really championed this, we'll call it, an activity to get people together, like-minded people together, to really try to figure out ways to either work together, keep things, all things Emeryville, and serve, of course, the need of the community. And we had about 90 attendees, all of which have reached out to me personally to ask when the next one is. So I take that as a win. Next year, I guess this year, is first priority, networking events. It's a great platform for not only myself as the chair of the EDAC, but as a business community member, to get together with like-minded people and try to figure out how to navigate this crazy thing called life. It's a great way for us to use Emeryville services, including print collateral material or whether that's catering in restaurants, keep that revenue in Emeryville, which is our number one goal. The idea is that we have things, we have this event presented quarterly. Again, as the chair, I don't care if we have to hold it in the parking lot of some store, we will have this event. So it's really kind of a passion project of mine, again, as a business member, but also for our committee to make sure that we're serving the businesses, large and small, here in Emeryville. And then our second priority is marketing materials. The importance to show people, whether that's through trade fair, trade show style events, or whether that's people who walk in and want to know more about the city, is incredibly, it's incredibly important to have those things really dialed in and have them something that they can take with them that's smart. That's not just, here's all the restaurants in Emeryville, but something that we put a little effort into. This also includes business listing on the website, business newsletter, and of course, specifically targeted print collateral, again, for those specific needs. Our other priorities include a citywide parking management plan. Again, if we bring these people here, we need a place for them to park. So that is something that we're heavily focused on as well. Our art center project, again, if once we have, you know, a strong foundation with our committee focusing on that art and innovation, these conversations are much easier for us to have. So I'm very excited for what's ahead of us. Affordable housing, the ideas that hopefully people who visit here want to live here and work here. So we think this goes also hand in hand. And then eventually, their children go to school here, and we start doing youth employment programs as well. This is something that is, again, very passionate to us as a committee because we want to start building the people that will soon employ other people here in Emeryville. And then monitoring local labor standards, especially with businesses that are coming to the area, we want to make sure that we're appetizing to them and make sure that they want longevity and, of course, help with Bill's retail tax also. And then business organizing opportunities is also something that we are focused on. So in conclusion, you know, we, last year was kind of a quick start year for us. We had a lot of things that we wanted to get done and, quite frankly, not a lot of time to get things done in. that we wanted to get done, and quite frankly, not a lot of time to get things done in. So the business license rebate, the facade grant programs, those, of course, are ongoing and very important to us. The main thing is now going to be creating a business-friendly, working, sharing environment moving forward, and of course, that's, that's kind of our goal in and of itself, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Members, do you have questions before I open to public comment? Thank you, Alex. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item, there's three minutes. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Banay Curtis, yes, you may.
Just have one quick, it's very exciting, all the things that you brought up, and I, as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee, I think the synergies are incredible.
Agreed.
The one thing I would like to see in your plan that I did not see, you've had public parking, important, but we also have public transportation, and I've had many friends come here, hollus, impossible, even on a Saturday, 40th Street is like a freeway, when it's clogged, that rush hour. So encourage use of the Emery Go Round and the AC Transit, and I think that would also make it easier to deal.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do you want to say anything formally to that?
Not formally, but I will take it back to the EDAC crew. I think, I mean, I think it's important that we look at all avenues, knowing that most of the people here in the East Bay are usually traveling by car, whether that's for convenience or vanity, I'm not sure, but we're seeing, we're seeing specifically in our little corner of the woods, people really looking for the need for parking spaces. So while we can't change necessarily the mindset to get people to do Emery Go Round, I will say that it's something that, I know all of the EDAC members, Bill can account for that too, something that we're really passionate about, whatever that looks like, if we, whatever we need to do to make sure that things are buttoned up, so to speak, we're pretty dedicated to do that.
Thank you, Alex. I'd like to begin with Councilmember Pats, who is our liaison to this excellent committee. Would you like to wax poetic for us this evening on all the, all the great things you guys have done this past year?
I'll skip poetry, and I'll go right to thank yous. So, Alex, I think you've undersold how much effort you put into the networking event. You asked your facility hosted it, but you put a lot of time and energy into that, and from all accounts, it was a wonderful job, so thank you. And thank you for your leadership on the EDAC, it's much appreciated. I know for myself, just your last meeting, a couple weeks ago, I was in Sacramento at a conference and not able to attend, and so I get the updates and follow along as best I can, but I, you do an amazing job, so I want to take a moment and thank you for that. You know, and I think you have good guidance from Chad and from Charlie, you guys do great work on setting that all up, so thank you guys for that as well. I do want to give a special shout-out to Bill, who does do double duty, he comes and lets us know from the Budget Committee perspective, and so, thank you for that. You know, and I do want to point out that later on this evening, we'll be talking about the housing bond, and EDAC is putting together a special meeting, and people have agreed to come in on Monday to talk about it, so the businesses are looped in, and that's the kind of energy that, you know, and Chad, I see you nodding every time, I say, thank you for putting that together so quickly, and I just want to thank the business communities for coming out. You know, our meetings are at 11 o'clock on a Wednesday morning, which is prime working hours, and so they give up their time to come, and I know everybody on a committee does, but these are our small and medium and large businesses in town, and to come during office hours, and so I just appreciate that, and from there, I'll hand it back.
Thank you, Member Pats. Vice Member Deena.
Thank you so much for all the time and effort you've put into this. It's obvious that there's a great need among our business community for what you're providing with the attendance to your events, and also the amount of applications you've gotten for the programs that you've suggested, so thank you so much for your leadership.
Member Martinez?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do, thank all the members of the committee, I know it's tough, we have a large void without a local chamber that you and Chad fill, so thank you for everything.
Member Donahue?
I think that this committee has already sort of given our city a direction on our future, that I think is very valuable. And we should keep our ears open to their ideas, because I think we're going to need to do that going forward, for developing our community. So it's, it's important that economic development be a cultural and a thoughtful approach for our future. And I think that as we become denser, we're going to find new opportunities coming our way.
Thank you, and I just want to echo my colleagues, and in particular, Member Pats' comments, and thank Chad, but especially thank Alex and Bill, you're both here, and all the other members of the committee, I see Dave Kritzberg back there. You know, thank you all for your work on this committee, and, you know, Alex, I went to the jingle mingle, it was, it was a blast, you should host every party in Emeryville. And so really, thank you for all your efforts and for working so closely with the Public Art Committee on our economic strategy, which, you know, we've presented to other outside, you know, sources, we've shared that with other public agencies, this is our way forward, and I think that this is a committee that works very closely with, you know, Budget Advisory and other committees, and you're a flex, you fill the flex slot, and so you really have to touch all the other things we do, and really grateful for all the work that you and the business members of that committee put in on behalf of the city, and so again, thank you for being here this evening and all your work.
That concludes item 12.4, and that concludes the Council, or I'm sorry, the committee reports for this evening, we'll do the rest of the committees at the next meeting, I believe. And so we're going to move to item 12.5, which is Housing Bond Measure for June 2018 ballot. Susan Shea and Michael Gina. Michael, are you going to present these three items separately, or one presentation?
It's going to be one presentation.
Okay.
Give me just a moment. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council, I'm Michael Gina, the City Attorney, and for your consideration tonight are a series of resolution, resolutions and a first reading of an ordinance relating to the housing bond measure for the June 2018, June 2018 ballot. By way of short background, back in December, the City Council directed staff to start preparing for a housing measure and a parks measure for your June election. In your January and February meetings, you further refined that direction to direct that only a single measure, a housing bond measure for $50 million, should go forward in June, and that the parks measure could be put off until, excuse me, until November of this year. As part of your direction in February, you also directed that the housing bond measure should include Article 34 authority for 500 units. So what you have before you tonight are the resolutions and the ordinance that are necessary in order to put these, to put the housing bond measure on the June ballot. The city must submit these, must adopt these resolutions and the ordinance by March 9th in order to qualify for the June ballot, and I'll just briefly go through what these are. So the first, the first measure is the resolution calling a special election for June, and essentially requesting consolidation with the county ROV. The second resolution is a resolution determining that the public interest and necessity demand the development of affordable housing projects that would be financed through the issuance of the general obligation bonds. This resolution must be adopted by two-thirds of the total membership of the Council, so four out of five. The last item is the first reading of an ordinance, which would order the submission of the proposition for issuing bonded debt to the voters at the special, at the special election held on June 5th. The, this is a first reading of the ordinance, the second reading would be, the second reading and adoption of the ordinance would take place on your March 6th meeting, in time for meeting the March 9th deadline. When you adopt, you can adopt the first reading tonight on a majority vote, but the, but the adoption of the ordinance itself, i.e. the second reading, must be adopted by a four-fifths vote of the total membership, so four out of five. The ordinance also contains the ballot question, as well as the Article 4 authority for 500 units. That is the conclusion of my report. If you have any financial impact questions, Susan Shea is here to provide any input there.
Thank you. Members, do you have questions for the City Attorney or the Finance Director right now? No, thank you, Michael. A question for you, Michael, since it was one presentation, and you've broken this into three items, may I do a consolidated public comment on all those items?
Yes, that's fine. I would ask that when you finally do take the vote, though, that you take it in the order that's presented.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will, we will open this for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will be afforded three minutes to speak on this item. Are any members of the public wishing to speak now? Mr. Sears?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople. Jeff Sears, Wareham Development. We have a great interest in this issue. The one point I really would like to make now is about oversight, and I know that one of the things you need to adopt is an oversight, it was not clear to me exactly how much specificity you need to do that, but in the staff report, I see that the recommendation is that the oversight be provided by the Budget Advisory Committee. I think that committee's done great work, and I was happy to hear an update tonight, but we would like to recommend that either a different committee, or an adjunct and some supplement to that committee be part of the oversight. I think the oversight is very important. We are hopeful that if this housing bond goes forward, that the city uses that money to greatest leverage by trying to involve the private sector, their core competencies, and hopefully their money to get the most benefit for the city out of your, hopefully, what might be used as seed funds, and that sort of process probably can use some additional expertise to add to already the great expertise of the Budget Advisory Committee. Just today, the San Francisco Chronicle focused on this issue as it relates to Oakland and the oversight, which actually, they were taking some shots at it. Now, I don't know if that's valid or not, the press is always 100% accurate, but I think it's a very important issue. So to the extent that this has to be defined now, I'd, which I don't know for sure, but we'd like to recommend a broader, deeper oversight committee for it.
Thank you for that comment. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Going once? Going twice? Public comment is closed. Mr. City Attorney, you have an add-on?
Sure, to respond, if I may respond to the, to the question. So, the oversight is discussed in the ordinance, and the oversight description in the ballot is described as citizen oversight, but it is not, but the ballot itself does not describe the Oversight Committee as the Budget Advisory Committee. In fact, the, the discussion of that is in the staff report, and that's, then using the Budget Advisory Committee is one possibility that you could do, once the bonds have been issued. But the actual legislation that you would be adopting tonight does not tie you to the Budget Advisory Committee, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. So that was into public comment. So, members, discussion. So we have, we have three items here, and I guess the way I'd like to proceed with this, if folks could humor me, is there are three items in front of us, and they essentially have the same content, with the exception of number two, which is a statement on necessity that's required. Do members, let me just do a poll, do members have things they would like to raise for discussion or to change? Do anyone, does anyone down here? Does anyone down here?
Yes.
Okay, I know Councilmember Martinez and I do, and so let's start then with Councilmember Martinez.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, I noticed that the language in the resolution and the ordinance when it comes to the ballot, ballot question, excuse me, differ slightly from our housing bond survey question. Could you speak to that, please?
Sure. The housing bond survey question was developed as a, certainly developed as a starting point, and it was not the intention that the housing, that the ballot, that the survey question would necessarily translate into, on a one-on-one basis, essentially, to what the ballot question would be. It was designed to essentially take the temperature of the electorate as to whether or not they would support issuing the indebtedness. So that's why you're not seeing a direct translation between the survey question and the ballot question.
So, what I see is, what I would characterize as a material change in, in being specific with, with the language. And my worry is that we surveyed on specific language, and our, our best efforts to get this passed might be stymied if folks feel that they're being asked a different question. So, I don't know if anyone else, to my colleagues on Council, we've got the housing bond survey question, which was distributed, and actually, I don't know if there's another copy of this, if that, if we could throw that up onto the overhead projector for folks who may be following this issue. I, for one, am hesitant to make anything more than minor changes to this question. The first change I would make, Michael, I don't know if you have a pen, but if you literally have a red pen.
He has right there, he's a good attorney.
There you go. Would you, would you, come back. I'm going to make some suggestions. All right, so with the question that's on the overhead projector, what I would strike is 60 million. Obviously, what we have discussed as a Council is 50 million in bonds.
Okay.
Okay, so I would, I would redline 60 and make that a 50 million. And I would also remove the word citizen, I noticed that that has been stricken from the, the current versions that are in the agenda, simply because, you know, as Mr. Sears makes a good point, that not every member who's going to be advising on this committee isn't necessarily going to be a resident of the city of Emeryville, they may be a resident of another place and work in Emeryville, they may have a different relationship with our city than being a citizen, a resident. And then I would put a comma in after the word audits, because I am a, an Oxford comma person.
So, if I can clarify, so this survey question will not appear on, this is not the ballot question. The ballot, this is, and this is not what is proposed to be put on the ballot.
I see.
This was the survey question that was distributed back in December?
Yes.
Right? To take the temperature of, of the residents out there.
Correct.
So, this was just a tool at the time, but the ballot question itself that would be put on is in the ordinance?
Yes, I, I'm clear on that.
Okay.
But is that, are you saying that the, the wording that's in the proposed ordinance and resolution, are you saying that that's how it has to be?
That's what staff is proposing to put forth.
Right, I, yes.
So, any edits that you're?
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally understand, that's, I'm bringing you back to the original document that we used to survey. That's, I'm bringing you back to the original document that we use to survey our constituents.
I want to let Vice Mayor Medina speak.
Just because the, you know, audience doesn't have the benefit of seeing also the proposed ordinance in front of them right now, the substantial differences come after the number, whereas it says, "Shall the city of Emeryville issue 50 million in bonds with an estimated average levy of 4.912 cents per $100 of assessed value, generating approximately 3.422 million annually to pay bonds over 27 years, requiring independent oversight with all funds staying local?" So there's a lot more math in the proposed language.
Correct.
But that's gotta be there.
Would you like me to put the proposed ballot question-
Yep, yes. So people can see it. Actually, if you can have-
Can you fit them both?
You fold it and just put them side by side, above and below?
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
So, and to clarify my position, I do want all of this information available to every voter. It would obviously appear in the voter pamphlet.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. I think, Mr. City Attorney, if I can add on to the, my colleagues, that, I think the question is, the voters were polled with the question that you had up just a second ago that we'll see again in a moment, I think. And the proposed ballot language now, the, the question on the ballot proposition, right, Section 1, as you have it outlined in the ordinance, now contains a lot of the tax information. And I know this is related to Assembly Bill 195, and that was a, a bill that was passed last year that has a lot of ambiguity in it. A Republican Assembly member passed a bill requiring that the tax information be listed in a ballot statement. And a ballot statement and a ballot question are different. And so, I see that you've introduced the tax information here and removed other information residents would see about the initiative. And so I think that's the question at heart, is can the information related to the tax assessment, which is required by law to be in the ballot statement? It can go in the ballot guide, but it's not the 75-word limited thing that appears as the question. Is there an obligation for us to have that information in both the ballot question and in the longer ballot statement?
So, the advice that I'm receiving from Bond Counsel is that, yes, that the, the tax information that is in the proposed ballot proposition in the top of your screen there is required under the new statute to be there. So that is, that is the, that is the advice that we're rece, that, that I'm receiving, and that is the advice that I am proposing to the council.
So, council's advising that it's contained within the question, not just the statement?
That's correct. That's correct.
Can I ask a couple follow-ups? We didn't have the benefit of meeting with Bond Counsel, so-
Sure.
-on this. Did you discuss this item, and did Bond Counsel advise that they're aware of the, the arguments around the ambiguities on this?
We didn't discuss the ambiguities of it. I did ask the question if the advice was to put the tax information in the question, and his advice was to, was yes, to include it there.
And is, have they actually worked on ballot measures where this was done this way? Because we've never seen this before like this. Voters don't usually get asked to do math like that.
Sure, but given that the new disclosure requirements just came online for January of this year, there isn't a lot of data set to compare to. So, you know, he is working on advising other cities. My understanding is that he is also advising his other city clients to follow this advice as well. And, so, anyway, so that's, so, so that's the, that's the advice I'm giving, and perhaps it is more conservative, but, you know, that is also part of my job, too, is to make sure that the ballot question, when put in front out there, will be able to, you know, that it's not going to be subject to challenge.
Other members wish to comment?
I just have a question about what our risk is if we, you know, don't include this and we choose to interpret as it's going to be in the ballot statement, anyway. What are the possible ramifications of that?
So, if you don't include it, and they, it's, it's possible that the, the measure will be subject to challenge for failure to comply with the provisions of the statute.
Do you think that's at all likely of happening?
It's, I, I couldn't tell you if, I couldn't tell you what, what that risk is.
Okay.
I'll, I'll tell you. There are people who look for exactly that reason to sue on any new tax. That's the lovely legacy of California, so if we get that wrong, they will pounce.
So, I have a question then, because if we have to include this information, which I, I can't believe they assigned a, a bill that has this ambiguity, because the word ballot measure isn't actually a term. It's a ballot proposition, there's a ballot question, there's a ballot statement. The ballot measure is the actual ordinance generally. And so, my understanding is there should be a section in the ordinance that outlines for the public, since we publicly notice ordinance is what the tax rate would be, and that's fine, people should know. But in terms of eating up the limited 75 words we have to inform the public what we would do with the bond, I just get concerned that this defeats the purpose of informing the public, because somebody looking at it says $50 million in bonds averaged at this weird 4.912 cents per hundred of assessed value, and they don't, nobody understands generally that fair market value and assessed value are completely different, right? So you can have a property in this town that has a fair market value of a half million dollars, and it's assessed by the assessor for tax purposes at 175. And so, people don't understand that, and they don't understand why it's 4.912 cents. And then you look at it, it says it'll generate 3.4 million a year for 27 years. Anyone who does basic math just multiplies three by 20, and you're already at 60, so they don't know why it's more than $50 million. It just seems to defeat the purpose of providing clarity to the voter the way it's written. And that's my big issue with this, is that it doesn't serve a purpose to me in actually informing the residents. It provides high information if you understand how bonds are issued and how taxes are levied, but if you don't understand that and valuation is done, I, I just find it very confusing. And so I'm, I'm concerned about confusing a voter.
So, one thing I'll also note is that the, there's a fuller tax rate statement, which is attached as the exhibit required under the statute and require, and attached as Exhibit A to the ordinance that goes into the detail. Now, I understand that that's further back. So, you know, I, I'm hearing your concern about, about possible voter confusion, but it is our assessment that the disclosure requirements need to be put in this place. I suppose if the council is feeling uncomfortable with the current wording, we can look at the calendar, and we can see what opportunities there are between Mark, now and March 9th to be able to further refine the ballot question.
To do that, we'd have to have a special meeting.
To do that, you would have to have a special meeting, and keep in mind that the ordinance, which this is, would have to be adopted at a, at a regular meeting.
So we'd have to have a special meeting before the March 6 meeting?
You would have to have a special meeting before the March 6 meeting, and that meeting has to happen no closer than five days prior.
So it would have to happen at the beginning of next week?
Okay.
10 days?
I believe you have to have 10 days between introduction and adoption, if I recall.
10 days from the 6th. Sherry, is the 26th of February, then? Or 6 plus, no, it's 6 plus 4, so it's the 24th?
24th.
And the 24th is what day of the week?
That's Saturday.
So we'd have to do it this week? And we would not be able to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is the word-
Hold the microphone down.
Have, is this language the maximum number of words?
Yes, this is 75.
Okay.
So- Member Pats?
So, I, I'm not as good at parsing words as an attorney is, but if a proposed measure imposes a tax or raises the rate of tax, the ballot shall include a statement of the measure to be voted on, and the amount of money to be raised annually, and the rate and duration of taxes to be levied.
Right, so the term, and you're looking at Section B of, Section 13, 119 of the Elections Code.
Yeah.
And I, that's the section I'm looking at, and in it, it says, "The ballot shall include in the statement of the measure," which is the ambiguous section, because this is the ballot proposition and the ballot question, and there is a ballot statement, which is the full-page thing that goes in, and then there's the ballot language, or the, the ordinance language, which is the full. So the word measure is what's made a problem for a lot of people, because no one's clear what it is that has to go in.
Yeah, I was, for me, it follows, and again, this is why I'm not an attorney, it follows from A, because A is very cle, it's gotta have a yes and a no box.
Yeah.
And so, for me, that's how I took it.
I understand. So, here's the thing, we don't need a special meeting, I don't think. We shouldn't, we shouldn't subject ourselves to that process. I don't think that's a good idea. We need to resolve this tonight. You have a comment?
Yeah, you know, just briefly, while we've been discussing this, I found two legal agencies that have already issued statements that come to the conclusion that our attorney is sharing with us, that it needs to be within the question itself, within the 75-word limited thing. And also, I've seen associations between the Howard Jarvis Foundation and the author of this bill, and they're supporting it, and I know that they are one of those groups that my Councilmember Pat-
Say his name.
-here was discussing. So if they're all, they were promulgating this bill, then it stands to reason that they might be looking for people who aren't following the letter of the law or what their perception is. So my appetite for risk is slightly lower, knowing that there's people who might be actively looking to stick it to us on a technicality.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm troubled by what I perceive as poorly worded legislation that has the consequence of undermining the public's access to information. The proper thing to do, Mr. Obernolte, when you write a bill like this, is to add 25 words or 50 words to the ballot language itself, so that people can actually get the information and the tax information at one time, and not just a bunch of numbers that don't make sense. So, shame on you. But, other than that, I do have a couple other small edits to the ordinance, and it may apply as well to the other documents. I haven't checked. But before I move on from this, are, are we okay that even though we, we don't like that this clouds clarity for voters, that we think this is going to be okay? How do you feel, Diane?
I think we need to move forward. We, we can't jeopardize our timeline, and we need to get this on the ballot, if that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Is, is that how you, if everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. Can I make one small suggestion that doesn't change much of anything? The one change between the two was when we listed off the vulnerable populations, we put them before low and middle income, and so, I would like to see it stay in that order.
I'm looking at what he's writing. Both of them say vulnerable populations, including low and moderate income first. Both of them do say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, they put it in there twice.
So, and the, and the reason I'm, the reason I want to, I want to defend what Diane introduced here a little bit, because, you know, she and I worked as ad hoc committee on these items, and we brought in people who do housing bond survey questions, who like do these things for a living, and this was the language they represented to us as the most, the best way of informing the public about the issue. And so, the change to the back half of it, even though I understand the city attorney's understanding is that, hey, that was just a survey question, this is the ballot question, when you actually test a question in the public, you are supposed to test the very question you give back to people. When you give them one thing, and then you ask them to vote on something else, you're not running with the same statistics. And so, that's the, I think, the concern that some of us are representing up here, is that we ask voters one thing, and if they say, well, you didn't ask me that question the first time, that's a fair assessment on their part. But we did poll this before this law took effect, and we understand that. And I think we recognize that we sort of have to do this, despite the ambiguities that we see here. But that's where we're coming from, is we want voters to have clarity and good information, and they were asked something slightly different, and we just don't want them to be perceived as having received a different question later. So, that being said, I want to turn my attention to the ordinance for a couple edits. And so, on page 2 of the proposed ordinance, Section 2, the paragraph that begins with "the acquisition," it should say "the acquisition or improvement of real property in order to provide affordable housing for extremely low." It shouldn't be extremely very low, low and, and middle income. Extremely low is actually a designation inside regular housing affordability metrics. And so there's ELIs, VIs, LIs, and middle incomes. ELI is an extremely low-income household, so it should say the word low.
I'm sorry, could, could you just repeat that again?
Where the word extremely is-
Uh huh.
-the word low should follow it before the comma. Do you see where I'm looking? Section 2, second, second paragraph, the sentence, yes, left, left of the margin, the word extreme, oh, so the version you sent us does not have the word low in it.
Oh, yeah.
You've got a different version than what you just gave us.
Okay.
So we are, we are not looking at the same draft anymore. So, what you have is not what I have now. Because I, mine does not say, does yours say the word low after it?
Nope, it doesn't.
No, the word low is not in the sentence we have. So, the draft that was presented to us in the report is not what you're presenting here now. So that's my first one. So, my next one is on the next page. And I'd like you to put that up first as well. And so in D, it should say "the rehabilitation of existing multifamily," up top, D, "the rehabilitation of existing multifamily projects that are affordable to extremely low, very low, low and moderate income families." The words extremely low should be there. It is a separate designation under affordability rules. You go to G, it's the same thing. It should say "including extremely low, very low, low and moderate income households." The reason this is important is because supportive housing residents are generally designated as extremely low-income households, and so not having an ordinance that allows for that could preclude bonds being used for indigent people who make no income. Okay. So, that's where I see those two. I think the word in H, it should say "provide permanent supportive housing." That's the official term in Housing Code. Should not just say supportive housing. Supportive housing, unless, unless it's the, unless it's the purview of the, the council to include what would be transitional housing. By not having permanent in front of it, supportive housing can technically be transitional, but it is a disfavored model in housing regulations. People okay with adding the word permanent?
Yes.
Okay, so it should be spent on permanent housing, people can stay. Okay, that's my next one. The, uh, let's see, I think I have one more. It's not at the back. And I just, I haven't looked to see if in the first, I'm just going to number 12.5.1 real quick, to see if it's the language carries over there as well.
Mr. Mayor, while you're looking, I just want to, you know, have the same remark that I had when it came to the ballot question, and I, I wanted to ask the city attorney about wherever there is reference to oversight by citizens, I would like to, if my colleagues agree, I would like to remove that word, because it's not necessarily citizens of the city of Emeryville who are going to be serving in that oversight capacity. So for instance, if we had our own Budget Advisory Committee serve, there are members of the business community who don't live in Emeryville, so I want to make sure we're not stymied or have our hands tied. Although we haven't made any decisions about who is going to be providing that oversight, I want to make sure that we're, that we, we have options.
May I tag on to your question? I, I agree with what she's trying to get at. The, the concern I have that comes from that question, though, is whether by removing the word citizen, it would open it up for a corporate entity to serve in the oversight capacity. And that would be my concern if we removed it, whether you think that that citizen designates a human being as opposed to a person, which we know corporations are people.
People.
And so, I'm just removing it. I, I understand what her intent is, and I support her intent. I just want to make sure we don't have an unintended consequence of then being asked to put a corporation on the Oversight Board, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. But at the same time, I would also be, you know, I don't know if we would be in the circumstance where a person who was undocumented happened to be an expert-
Oh, fair. That's totally fair.
...in these matters, and perhaps wasn't a citizen.
So, the intent was that the council have the flexibility to designate who the Oversight Committee is composed of. So, if the council decided that they only wanted natural persons to be on the Oversight- decided that they only wanted natural persons to be on the oversight committee, they can certainly do that. I don't think that, I don't think, to answer your question, Mayor, I don't think that the removal of the word "citizen" locks the council into a situation where they must appoint a corporation who may apply to be on the oversight committee. The idea is that by adopting the ordinance, you are saying that you will have an oversight committee to be appointed by the council. But that's it. And the membership of that committee will be up to you.
Can we, so I'm supportive of what she's asking for. Can we, because I agree with you, it just says that there will be independent oversight, and it doesn't need to say the word "citizen" and conscribe us further. I think Diane's right. So are we allowed to, you know, the bonds can be used, and the committee that will supervise or oversight them can, will exist for some period of time, right? Years, until the bond debt is paid off. And so I'm just curious if we can, if not having more language in the ordinance here, if, especially because it's being approved by voters, can we craft a, what can we craft after the adoption of this? If voters approve this, what can we craft that guarantees the types of things we want, the space we want to create is protected?
In terms of--
That it's an oversight body that's free to people, human beings, not necessarily of citizen status in the way that Diane has explained, I think, well. But that we also don't get other entities that are undesirable in terms of oversight purposes.
Well, ultimately, what you would do, I think your question, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your question is asking, at the point where the bonds are issued, and you are ready to have this oversight committee start to do the job of oversight, how do you create that committee?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, and what are the parameters that you set around that?
It's just like a resolution from us?
A resolution.
Okay. Okay, so it's subject to change in the future, technically, but that's, that's the thing I think I'm getting at, is I just want, I mean, there'll be a different group of five people here at some point in the future. And so I want to make sure that we, we can set a standard out of the gate and not leave open possibilities for it to be missed. I'm always trying to think, five to 10 years from now, how will it be managed by people in the future?
Sure. What you are, the standard that you're setting now is fairly general in that it will be a committee appointed by the council that will have oversight over the use and expenditure of the bond proceeds. Those are the parameters that you're setting now. Then, if and when the council does, in fact, issue the bonds, at that time, you will have, you will get into the details of what is the composition of that committee, who is, who is going to be on that committee, what are the parameters of the committee membership?
Okay. So I just want to highlight, so that when we make a motion here, we've captured Diane's suggestion. Where's the word "citizen" appear, Diane?
So, if I may--
Yes, go ahead.
I have the word version in front of me, and I did a--
Command F.
There's no "citizen" in the end.
So--
It's not in the ordinance part.
What I will point out to you is "citizen" appears on the first page in 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth "whereas clause", which reads, "whereas no funds will be taken by the state of California, and all expenditures will be subject to oversight by independent committee composed of citizens appointed by the city council."
Please say "individuals."
I was going to say the exact same thing. Is everyone okay with that word change?
Individuals.
Is that the only place it appears, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, no. One more.
On page five.
And then, right, on page five, in section 13, under the section titled "accountability measures", sub F. Give you a moment to get there.
Yeah, citizens, change it to "individuals" again.
Right.
Okay, so council members, do you have any other comments on this ordinance or this resolution? No. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, unless you have anything else to add.
If I'm, if I may, I want to read back to you the edits that you've called out, so that we all have clarity--
Yes, before you do that, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, no, I just saw a question from the audience. I was wondering if you wanted to address that.
We'll, we'll do that after we hear from the city attorney.
All right. So going with the ordinance, the, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth "whereas clause", the term "citizen" is taken out and replaced with "individuals." On page three of the ordinance, these changes will be made.
Yes.
I will also clarify that in section two, under "object and purpose of bonds", that second sentence does include the word "words extremely low."
Yes. Those are the changes, and then there's one more use of the word "citizens."
That's correct. So section 13, sub F, the word "citizens" will be replaced with "individuals."
Right.
Members, do you have any questions about these? No. Okay, I'm going to give you an opportunity to move your stuff back to your space. And I understand, was there a member of the public who had a question? Okay, give us one second to let him get back to his space, so that we can accommodate him hearing the public.
Would you like this up here?
You can leave that up there, that's fine, thank you. I don't know what the question will be, but we can leave that for now. Question from the public.
Just a quick question for some clarification. You mentioned, it's mentioned, "maximum interest rate shall be 12%." I'm just curious to how you came to 12% or how--
Where, where are you looking?
Various places, but for example, page three of the--
But we have three documents. Is this the ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Ordinance, page three, okay. So I'm on page three now.
Right at the very bottom, section five, maximum interest rate.
Right, so that's the interest rate that the city pays on the debt.
Correct, but I'm just curious as to why that particular number is chosen--
We have to provide, I believe, and council will correct me if I'm wrong, we have to provide to the public a cap on the debt that would be accrued, and that is clearly an outer limit.
Right, yeah.
So we are capping it at 12%.
And not less.
No, we, we are not capping it at less, but I can tell you that the, you're very close to an individual who was at a recent committee meeting. Or maybe he, was he at our committee meeting? I guess maybe not. We had Standard &amp; Poor's come in to talk to us about credit rating, and so the city has a double-A credit rating on its prior bonds, for the benefit of the public. And the way the credit system works, you can get a notch, which is a double-A plus. And then the highest rating is a triple-A. There's no notches, minuses, or pluses on triple-A. And generally, if you have successfully managed your debt in the past, which we have, your next bond rating is automatically a notch up. So we start at a double-A plus. And because the city made some very prudent fiscal investments with unfunded liabilities, our OPEB is very well managed, and we may put money in the pension trust. Although those aren't conclusive, those indicate a very strong trajectory for the triple-A rating, which what that yields for us is competition to buy our bonds, which decreases the ta, the rate that people give us in interest. And we could have a very low interest rate, but we are statutorily required to provide a cap.
I, I understand that. I was just curious as to how they came to the 12%--
Yeah, and if staff wants to elucidate why--
--or something like that.
Susan, do you want to, you or the consultant want to come up and explain why you chose 12%? If that's just a practice, or you reached that through a conclusion? That's a good question, thank you.
Actually, this rate was added by the legal counsel, and we have seen this, you know, 12% in other, you know, ballot measures as well, such as Oakland's housing ballot measure.
Okay, and we don't, we, your experience, though, is that we generally won't reach that. That's just a cap that we're required to provide.
Right.
Thank you. Is that, okay. All right, members, are there any other questions? Okay, we're going to take these items one at a time. The first is, item 12.5.1 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville calling a special municipal election on June 5, 2018, ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Emeryville, a measure to approve an issuance of affordable housing bond, requesting that the Alameda County Board of Supervisors permit consolidation of the Emeryville Special Municipal Election with the statewide direct primary election to be held the same date, et cetera. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina, and a second from Member Pats to approve the resolution, calling for the election. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Item 12.5.2 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville determining that a public interest and necessity demand the development of the affordable housing projects and the financing of projects relating thereto in the issuance of general obligation bonds. For this resolution, I will take a motion.
I will move the resolution with the changes so noted by our city attorney.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Martinez, and a second by Member Donahue to approve the resolution as amended in discussion this evening. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any questions on that?
I just want to clarify that the edits that we discussed were all on the ordinance and not on this resolution. So this resolution was unedited during our discussion.
Okay, so then, may I clarify my, my movement? So to, to clarify that in the, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth, whereas, the word "citizen" shall be replaced with the word "individual."
Thank you.
And I think that is the only place where it appears, appears, and my motion stands with that correction.
Member Donahue, does your second stand with that amendment?
Yes.
So there's a motion by Member Martinez, and a second by Member Donahue to approve the resolution with the amendment noted. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Item 12.5.3 is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville calling a special election and ordering the submission of a proposition incurring bonded debt for the purpose of financing affordable housing projects to the qualified voters of the city of Emeryville at a special municipal election to be held June 5, 2018. I'll take a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
Move to read it by title only.
Seconded.
I have a motion to read by title only from Vice Mayor Medina, and a second from Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Mr. City Attorney.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville calling a special election and ordering the submission of a proposition incurring bonded debt for the purpose of financing affordable housing projects to the qualified voters of the city of Emeryville at the special municipal election to be held on June 5, 2018.
Thank you. And members, if you would humor me, may I make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to move to introduce this ordinance at its first reading.
With the amendments.
With all the amendments, thank you, with all the amendments that were discussed earlier.
Second.
A motion by the mayor, and a second by Councilmember Martinez to introduce the most, the ordinance at first reading. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Thank you to my colleagues. We'll have one more vote on this on March 6. And thank you to staff, Susan Shea, the consultants, the city attorney, the clerk, Mr. Smalley and others. I know you're all working very hard on this. And the voters of Emeryville have made it very clear that affordable housing is something we need to do. Teachers, nurses, tradesmen, all those people deserve to work and live here, and I think that we're taking a step in the right direction. So thank you for your assistance, and to my colleagues for plowing through this this evening.
Sorry for all the curveballs, Mr. City Attorney.
No, that's fine. It's, I'm glad we were able to work it out. Thank you.
We did it, we did it. That's what matters. So, hi there. I feel so bad for Joey Rose Studio. I don't know why we put you at the end of the agenda, but I guarantee you, I told you, the last is the best thing. And so item 12.6 is a resolution of the city council adopting a public art committee recommendation to approve the design proposal by Joey Rose Studio for the Public Art Mural Project at the Emeryville Greenway. And Emmy, thanks for hanging out, and it's over there. There you go. Tell us all about this. This is the fun part.
Well, more importantly, I'd like to thank Mr. Rose for hanging out. His introduction to a laborious council meeting.
Hey, 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 hey.
Laborious. For very important items, I'd like to point out, artist housing may be in the future.
Or a check later this evening, right? One of those two days.
More immediate. Let me see. If I can quickly get to our PowerPoint here. Well, you folks have seen this general topic in the past several times, actually, from the very beginning in the Public Art Master Plan to the initial pilot program suggestion of this location at the Greenway mural, to be at the extension of the Stanford de Powell, which this depicts a site plan of it. We had suggested two locations. Just to go over quickly, the context, the urban form is very dense in this area. The Greenway has a wonderful pathway through the area. And in the upper left, you can see the extension of the Greenway to the northeast of the site, the general area. And then this is the Greenway extension before the recent improvements that we've made with the Greenway project. And so these are the two main walls that you would see along the Greenway that really needed some updating, so it'd have some interest for the public. And then as you walk along the Hollis corridor, you actually, there's a little pedestrian window we want to catch somehow. This site plan here shows both the Greenway improvements and the improvements suggested by the property owner and the tenant of the Broken Rack. So these improvements here, shown in the green and the gray, show our improvements. These are a seat wall that faces that blank wall, and one of the reasons why the PAC had suggested doing the mural at this location. This is a ping pong table that will be part of the Greenway improvements. And the public will actually be able to go into the Broken Rack, borrow some ping pong paddles, and be able to play. So one of the things that the Public Art Committee had as a priority for these murals is that they would be joyful and tranquil, because not only are millennials using the pathway, but there's families that are using the pathway too. So they really wanted everyone to be able to joy. This is the big blank wall that they would be looking at from our seating area, and the reason why we definitely need a mural there. These improvements that you see here, the enclosure and some outdoor seating, is a separate permit that's being considered by the planning division at this time. And then on to the mural itself. As you can see, we've already got some playfulness happening with the balloonist. This is an example of Mr. Rose's previous work. Do I have this right side up? Okay, so this is a ceiling piece. And then this piece is an installation in the eating area, outdoor eating area. So I have actually shown two mural examples here, two options. One was the balloonist with local insects. These are insects native to our area that would be in the mural with some additional detail. And then there was another option where there was a bouquet of flowers, essentially of local flowers, that would be blown on the wind, pulling the balloonist. And the preference was for the local insects, just because the theme seemed to go together better, and also it had more detail, like these geometric patterns that created more three-dimensional effect for the mural. The reason why I'm showing this at all is because some of the details, and one of the things that the PAC really appreciated about the proposal, the details shown using the, the second theme for the purpose of massing. So this is the wall as, there's the green, there's trees at these locations here at the end, so it wouldn't be the entire wall, if I'm correct, that would be covered, but that main central part. These are some of the peek-a-boo kind of looks that you would see. This is at Hollis and Stanford, the view. This is that pedestrian pathway. Again, this is showing mainly just the massing and the color scheme. This is as you get closer to the intersection of Pelado and Stanford. And then this model here, again, this is a conceptual design. When we get the final artwork in, they'll be a little bit different type of insect and some additional insects in the, in the picture. One of the things you can note from this, however, is that you can see that the artist, unlike many artists who just did a flat rendition, he showed the actual building and what it would look like in place. So they really appreciated his attention to detail. And, and when staff performed our reference checks on the artists, there were several commercial artists, successful commercial artists, that he had provided his references, and, and consistently a theme of what they said about his work was that he-- about his work was that he was, had a lot of attention to details, and he really went the extra mile with projects. This slide here, well, at least you can see the bottom line well, and that is, it shows the overall cost of the project for the artist's fee, but it also includes a 15% contingency, and importantly, includes graffiti treatment on the project. And then, we, at this time, we have an ambitious schedule of a timeline of starting by March 12, and that is a function, obviously, of getting the...
You're going to start in 2017?
Yeah, 2017. We're doing, going back in time.
You might want to update your contract, Joey.
I thought I said it's...
You're a little overdue.
It's very ambitious, so, I'll just change to 2018. And we'll need to do a license agreement with the property owner for access, and that's a separate agreement that our City Attorney is working on. And then, the community celebration, we are hoping to dovetail the celebration of the reveal of the artwork with the celebration for the Greenway opening of that section.
We should just do one celebration of all of it.
Right.
Yes, thank you, Andrew agrees, okay.
And so, these are basic, the quick viewpoints of the before and after with the blank walls, and then, the artwork on the walls. And this pretty much concludes staff's report. At this time, our recommended action is for council to approve the resolution adopting the PAC's recommendation to approve the design by Joey Rose Studio, and then, to authorize the city manager to execute the related agreement. And the artist is here, if you have any questions of him or staff at this time.
Thank you, Emmy, and I would like to invite Joey to come on up, and you've sat here so patiently for so long, you know, feel free to charm us beyond your artwork and tell us a little bit about yourself and whatever you'd like to say.
Yeah, so, my name's Joey Rose. I actually grew up in Shingle Springs, California, and went to college here in the Bay Area. I went to California College of the Arts in Oakland and San Francisco, currently living in Walnut Creek, so I'm a local Bay Area artist, and I'm super grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful all of you are so supportive of the public arts, and I'm excited to make an impact on my community.
Great. This is an item open, well, before we do that...
Questions?
Yeah, is there any questions? That's right, yeah.
I do, Emmy, do you mind pulling up the slide that showed the massing for the larger piece? Because I'm just curious how the door that's, okay, so I'm just looking at, is this the door that is going to exist, or is this...
This is actually the conceptual drawing, so as part of the contract agreement, Mr. Rose will be doing final artwork, and part of the final artwork that we want him to do is to take the plans, if they are approved by, let's see if I can get this to go right. So, if these plans are approved for the outdoor seating, we would want him to do the final work based on this elevation, and also to take the artwork and put it the bottom of it above the railing. That's for the enclosure, to make sure that chairs aren't cutting into his artwork, that it would be maintained well.
Great, that was my question, thank you.
Other members have questions? I have one question. So, something that's, we have a graffiti abatement fund in the town, and unfortunately, we get the occasional destitute building that gets graffitied, and my hope is that as an active space, this won't be graffitied, and I, there's a special place in it for people who ruin artwork. But I'm just curious, there's this graffiti protection that you have in the plan, how does it work and how long does it last?
It's a new waterborne urethane that Benjamin Moore produces, and I actually used it on one project in the summer, and it's just a really heavy, thick coat of plastic, basically, that you lay over, that you apply with a roller, and it hardens pretty much within an hour. And it, somehow, they've figured out that it protects it from graffiti, so when graffiti is painted on top of this material, it can be washed away with soap and water.
Okay. And the lifespan of that protective coat is about how long? Is it a 25 to 50-year sort of thing, or is it longer than that even?
I'm actually not sure.
Okay. I'm just thinking of, maybe, Emmy might know the answer to that one, yeah?
I think most coatings are a maximum of 10 years, however, it's possible, because it's a mural piece, that the actual term may be seven to 10 years in any case.
Okay.
It can be reapplied after 10 years too, or however long.
Okay, great. Other members have questions? Nope? All right, thank you for coming, and we'll open this for public comment now. So, members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes to speak on this item if they so wish. You want to, no, you just want to shake your fist rah rah from the audience, yeah? So, we have some silent support in the back. We'll take that as public comment, and we'll close public comment. So, Member Donahue.
Well, just that I hope you feel free to arrange your composition with what actually is there almost now, and that, that, you know, you keep adjusting how you see fit.
Great. Member Martinez.
I think this is going to be a really vibrant piece in a really well-used part of Emeryville, so I look forward to seeing the final product.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I am excited that this is going to be up well in advance of Bike to Work Day, if it goes according to the schedule in 2018, and that's going to be fantastic for the community to get to look at.
That's a good point. Member Pats.
It's already up, it was put up in 2017.
Poor kid.
I have to say, the last time we approved a piece of art, I didn't, I didn't get the sense until I saw it in person how wonderful it was and what a great job the commission did. So, seeing this, I'm already impressed. I'm just blown away by the pieces. I'm, I want to ask where the other piece that you showed was, so I can go see it in person, because I'm just really, really impressed, and so, I'm very excited for this. I just, I'm blown away.
Great. I just want to echo all of my colleague's sentiments. The smaller building, you know, I want to agree with Member Donahue, you know, use the space and adapt it as you want, you know, don't give away all your artistic talent to the little slits in the walls if you don't need to, right? So, you know, be creative and be flexible, and staff will support you on that, and we do too. And so, welcome, and we look forward to having an opening in April of 2018, and we'll do it to coincide with the Greenway. I know Andrew and folks are almost done with that. And so, at this time, I'll take a motion.
I move approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve the resolution by Member Donahue, and I have a second from Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, approved, welcome.
Thank you.
Department head reports, are there any members of staff who are department heads that wish to report? Charlie, do you have anything? I always pick on Charlie first, but he's usually the guy who has some.
Um, no.
Awesome. Andrew? So, Dave, I know you're in the booth, I need you to put the camera on the fire chief. So, we are, we have John Walsh here. Welcome, John. John's subbing in temporarily, filling in for us, and John, do you have a department update?
Unfortunately, no.
No? Okay. Chief DeHada? No? And Carolyn, anyone over here? Okay, we have no department head updates. Future agenda item request from members, anyone? No? Ladies and gentlemen, the time is 9:53, we're adjourned.